Brian's here to talk about the head brick there. It's a landmark.
Very good. Well, come on up, Mr. Brian Morgan. The, uh, what this was in regards to is, is that we were trying to move forward with putting a walking bridge. Gene, we're trying to move forward putting a walking bridge on Delaware Avenue. And, uh, we did the study with the state. If I'm not correct, tell me if I'm saying something wrong. And the state, or the Army Corps, or some of the state?
The state did the design, and the result of the design, they estimated a tenth of a foot elevation in the flood, flood elevation.
Why?
FEMA won't permit that in the floodway. And, uh, so, uh, KCI, let's do a landmark, additional letter, after revision, hopefully have come up with something. And I think they are looking at an accuracy approach. Am I correct there in terms of that tenth of a foot as a possible avenue? But for FEMA to review it, sixty-five hundred dollars. So it must be some high-fitting people looking at it or something. Even more expensive than KCI.
A tenth of a foot which way?
Throughout the floodplain. It could be anywhere, I'm assuming.
Oh, any, any.
It could be anywhere in that floodplain. And, uh, the, the, initially, we felt that, that since the structure did it affect, it was on our own property, we could get the letter of conditioning. But I'll, Brian, tell us what you got. Send me guesses.
No, I mean, this is a pretty fair assessment, really. You've got to kind of hit the hell right on the head. Unfortunately, it's not even a tenth of a foot that we're dealing with. It's a hundredth of a foot.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right.
The amount of things that we're dealing with is actually over the past. There's all kinds of things that I've investigated that are at our advantage. The actual base flood elevation issue on the map is fifty-one. The model, when you run it, is at fourteen-seven-six. So it's already put up, but when I talked to FEMA, they said, we'll take the model, we won't take the base flood elevation. So fourteen-seven-six. The regulations, the federal regulations state any change, you can't have a change above zero point zero zero. Or zero point zero one. So then, you know, wheels started spinning, and I started jumping and coming through and looking at the, we have an email from MBE that says the zero point zero one is beyond the accuracy capability of this software. Zero point zero one is beyond the accuracy of any conventional survey equipment. So a hundredth of a foot is, is essentially no change. But when you run a model, we put the FEMA model that we've been used, and that was updated a little bit by the state. You know, it reflects some new information. And then we added a bridge to that model, rerun the model, and we get the zero point zero one increase in two locations, two cross-sections increases. So.
Were you doing something? When the state done their little bit of grading and changing the, the road on Delaware Avenue. They first came in, they dug down and done some changes. Then they came back in and done it again. The state's complaining about us asking them to fix the grade, but couldn't that been a result from their little digging from the beginning?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a lot of, a lot of ways that this process could be easier than what we're at at the moment. And so the state, I think the state, my understanding, the state has come back and said, um, you know, they'll take care of design on the bridge and handle that aspect. They just can't get past the floodplain issue. They don't want to do a design only to have it shut down by FEMA. So I reached out to FEMA and spoke with two of their local agencies. I spoke with one initially. And he said, you know, I said, look, okay, it's an air tonner, so it costs us sixty-five hundred bucks just to get you guys to review this. It's a hundred and fifty, probably sixty-five hundred. Is this typical? You know, if, if you see a change in the zero point zero one P, that's what you got in the ground. I would say, in my opinion, that, you know, point zero one is no change. Um, but he said, no, reach out to this person. He gave me another contact. And he said, reach out to this person, do me a favor and call me back once you talk to them, tell them what they're thinking. So I reached out to another landmark reviewer and asked their opinion. And their opinion was the federal regulations state zero point zero, anything above zero point zero zero, you have to do whatever change that you need to make to get it to the point you're, you're for change. She said, but, your main reason I don't care. But what you're talking about, um, could be presented. And I can't tell if she was trying to tip me off with a way to submit the application and have it reviewed on favorably. She said that it could be submitted. If, you know, what you're saying is that it's beyond the capability of the, the software and survey equipment. So it is zero point zero zero with an accuracy of zero point zero one. So she's saying it's plus or minus. We can present it as no change, plus or minus one zero one P. I need to get your direction and, uh, you know, because I don't want to go out on a limb and, and spend, you know, sixty-five hundred dollars in town money to not have it reviewed favorably.
And after all that, what, what do you suggest or what do you see, even though you're here to, to make this progress?
So I am anxious. And I think that, you know, I'm five steps down the road. We submit the application, and we're fortunate and the zero point zero one accuracy, this is where we need to be. That's great. We can definitely put that accuracy wherever that are. If the zero point zero one doesn't come back favorably, then, you know, we could put a little bit more time and effort into it. And so right now, we have a model that has been, you know, kind of adapted by multiple agencies. MBE did some revisions in two thousand and seven to reflect sediment in the land. It was, you know, updated based on some flood gauge, tidal gauge data. So this model, as it evolved, for two thousand and seven, we're still, you know, it's still going backwards and the channel could have changed. So we could, I would start with getting one survey cross-section at the bridge to see. My fear is knowing the segmentation issues that we had after this one event under the bridge, what we got worried.
It's not good right now.
Yeah, I would like to send a picture, rip the application of some pedestrians walking over that bridge, more traffic. That's, uh, safety is your business. They had nothing to do with that flood, uh, the percentage based on the safety of the pedestrians.
And I get it. Unfortunately, you know, there are multiple jurisdictions that are dealing with the same thing that over town. We have the Route Seven Bridge and kids issue, I mean, we cross that bridge. I crossed that bridge when there were kids walking across the bridge, standing up on the parapet wall, scared of them. Uh, and, you know, the state has been involved numerous times, and the bridge will not support any of your structures. So it's on, you know, any developer, any town, whoever wants to take the pass along to the water, it's going to be a great thing to do. And then you go back and it's got to be on. You can't show, you know.
Who's the state?
It's a state road.
What if I, what I'm saying, what I'm just calling it?
It's a state road, but it's also title orders to ask the Army Corps of Engineers involved.
I don't want to live in the past, but what's the difference between that bridge and Senator Baker Bridge? Because I think it was when the Senator Jacobs was here one time, and it was around the street case, and, oh, how beautiful everything is. Like, it's her. And when we were talking to her, and I said, isn't it a shame we have such a beautiful Main Street, you know, makeover? And we have this ugly old bridge that you have to cross, come in. Next thing I know, we're getting a brand-new bridge. So I don't recall going through any of this stuff. We have, we reached out in that direction to her.
You wouldn't have went through it, but it was a little state project.
Right.
It was completely engineered by the state.
So the state doesn't want to do this?
No, this is the, the pedestrian bridge was requested by the town. For this location, not, not, and that was different.
After the request to do by the town, I was with Phil, we're, you know. It was our request to, what can we do though?
Senator Baker, yeah, they, they really did a lot of work with that.
Maybe we ask for a whole new bridge.
So the state maintains the list of bridges and kind of a priority list. And, you know, the routine answer is that this is further down the list. It's not something that, you know, the bridge still has plenty of life left. That, you know, it does more as a replacement at this point. So, you know, I mean, it's, there's a, there's an answer, there's a response to, you know, pretty much anything we can throw out there.
And at this time, because we know that would not replace the bridge. It's not, you know, devastating neighborhoods or when it floods. It's just closing the road, and that's what we were told for a small amount of time. But, um, you know, it's, it's a shame that it is, the more people coming into town, the more traffic on that bridge, and they're walking, not only at night. I've noticed that, yesterday especially, instead of six o'clock, it was six fifteen, I was coming by, and it was very foggy, and a lot of elderly people were walking from town to walk around the track. And it's very dangerous, even in the morning now. So it's.
It's not a big one.
It, it, I know, and you, we don't want that to happen, to take that one, because we have to deal with so many different departments at the state level. Do you feel that the first person you talked to that thought it was okay at the point of one, would he be on this review committee, he or she?
So there are two reviewers in that office, and I spoke with both of them. Now, you know, FEMA, this was FEMA personnel that I was talking to directly. FEMA doesn't do a lot of reviews themselves. They farm that out to consultants, like KCI, like, it's not us.
Right.
But they use other engineering firms to process these requests. And, uh, so we really want to do this again. Now, the other catch is, at the end of the day, FEMA would issue, if we were successful, FEMA would issue a, a conditional letter, a non-conditioning. It's conditioned upon the asphalt condition being exactly what was proposed. Ultimately, the town, as floodplain manager and FIT manager, would make the call as to whether this was appropriate. The risk associated, so the town could say, yes, we accept zero point zero one accuracy as, as, you know, as being appropriate. It's the audit process. And, you know, so any finding that you made, you as a town body are much safer making that in the direction than with a discretion of, you know, to make sure that you're, you know, whatever, you know, down. So, you know, again, they're issuing conditional. And, um, you know, they're going to rely on, on the town to a degree, but I think that, you know, the safety factor is to rely on their own decision.
Gene, you had a question real quick.
Can we balance the site by removing an equivalent map of material in the floodplain? Whether it's a portion of building, or sediment, or something that would balance the site so it would stay in zero?
And, and that has potential. I mean, we would, we would have to revisit the model. And one of the exercises that we did was, you know, where would we have to put this bridge structure in order to not show any increase at all, really increase, um, sixty? Does that make you go away? And so I don't know how much volume would be required. It's a pretty, pretty wide cross-section. And commentating like you're talking, I mean, it's, it's a perfectly reasonable idea. Um, and, you know, it would just be a matter of how much would we have to fart out of that wide cross-section to be able to change that surface.
A little more idea with, you know, driving, stream restoration, or whatever you want to call it, where we improve the banks of the creek.
Right.
It could balance the impact of the bridge.
Right, absolutely. I mean, the sedimentation and the volume that that takes to help makes a big difference.
Just add a lot more cost to the project.
Yeah, we would, right.
It, it's amazing that we have to go through this exercise when we're just putting something, attaching it to the side, probably pouring a couple footers for this. But my opinion is this, I've seen individuals walk across there. I have walked across there, and I'm scared to death to walk across that bridge. And if we have to move forward to take a chance for sixty-five hundred dollars to save a life, that is nothing. Safety should be our number one concern here. And if we can, it, and I know there's no guarantees, there's no guarantees in this, and that's the, the, the part that really kind of sucks here a little bit. But I think it's something that we, we got to exhaust all of our options, and, uh, that bridge has to be built. And there's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. We got to get that pedestrian bridge built.
I agree. And we'll come back with whether it's a yes or no, but if it is a no, the reasoning why that we could continue to push forward with our legislative truth.
If we shoot for a new bridge.
I mean, if this side of town, I will say.
Traffic flow. All numbers. Okay, that's how they, that's what they classify.
And the APD is, I, uh, yeah, I can't give a guarantee on those sixty-five hundred dollar expense, but, you know, I can guarantee each guy's support to sit with the town and keep coming up with. I've got an arsenal like this. And we can draw on that once we start that process and we have them engaged, even, we can continue to, they'll be able to launch all of my ideas, and then hopefully we'll wind up with a group of guys.
So Lou, you need us to vote next Wednesday on moving forward with this, or is it just that the board authorized the expense for KCI to submit the landmark application? Okay. That's all you need, Lou. Is there any other questions or comments in regards to it? Anyone from the audience today? All right. Brian, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
All right, let me flip the map for you, Lou, for the next project. The, uh, the next item we wanted to discuss was 124 East Main Street. 124 East Main Street with the, it's more. Oh, there you are. See that little pan there in carrot's corner?
Yes.
This little section right here. Several years ago, they demolished the building, and now it's a vacant lot. And, uh, the, we talked about it briefly, I think at the last workshop. Uh, the person who owns the lot has interest in selling that lot. In fact, it, quite frankly, is way too much money. It was a hundred seventy thousand dollars.
It paid a hundred seventy-five initially for the property when it was approved, and the assessment on it currently is sixty thousand.
Sixty thousand.
No, I'm sorry.
You pay seventy-five thousand?
It paid a hundred seventy-five on the deed.
And, um, at this point, I can't see how we can move forward with any of that. Now, was there a meeting coming up?
I'm meeting on Friday with Demi, yes, Jones, with him, the owner, Raphael Saitini. I worked with him years ago, um, because when he purchased the building, he was going for a facade grant. And, um, you know, until he found out structurally, he called the leaning power, the power of Main Street, because it was falling on Mr. Hare's building, so it had to come down. But, so I have had a little relationship back and forth, talking with him on the phone. So, um, because this came up, he had, uh, we had conversation about two years ago with this property and how, well.
Can I see that? Why are you talking? I'm sorry. So you're talking about them doing this?
That would be.
Or something else?
That would be, that would be, if we could acquire it for the right number.
That's the need, that's the need.
I would think the game plan would be to, to make a, uh, you know.
Where's this go to?
Goes all the way down to the road.
Right here. As a right of, for the property law group.
Yeah, to Howard Street.
Now, the challenge, once again, that we would have if we went to do a walkway, and Brian and Gene can probably answer it better. It's in the floodplain, trying to put concrete steps and structure. It might be a challenge, once again, and, um, you know, the, the juice may not be worth the squeeze, as I said to Lou earlier, just may not, may not be worth it collectively. And, um, so I'd say we, at this point, we see what the meeting is like on Friday. If it was a, a donation to the Tenon, or a very small amount, then I think that, and now things are looking brighter.
Yeah. I have another question, can you put blacktop area where the grass is there in, if it is considered flood zone? Because some of those properties, the building might not be up at the top of the street, but the back part is.
Well, I mean, if, if you're also in the critical areas, you have to look at, with a lot, there's an permeable surface limit, and you couldn't have all that tape. Um, I believe with floodplain regulations, you have to show, they also require infiltration some, you know, in the respect of.
Yeah, you'd have stormwater management, or, or, yes, a 10% reduction for your critical area, I would say. Um, we could approach MBE, where they do an permit application, to be able to serve in the floodplain. And the key element that they're looking for there is, again, you're not going to fill in the floodplain and take away storage.
So maybe looking for forest gamers or something that'll last an infiltration on the ground. Would you have to vision?
Well, I was just thinking.
Narrow, a narrow strip of land.
And actually, the owner next door is that he wouldn't mind if it was expanded. So there was parking available for, for that end of the street. So.
But the problem is, the adjacent property's higher. You can't put, flood, I mean, fill in the floodplain, so they're, they're a different elevation. You can't pull it up to manage it. It'd be illegal. You get on there and look for gasoline, it's hard to find it, to when it floods. It floods all the way over in that area, and I don't think gasoline is close to really bad, because it's higher there.
Oh, you're going to flood, I think you're going through the.
That's why I'm behind the housing authority.
Yeah, all that floods in there, it's always on water.
That lazy for such a long time.
So is that stairs, I wouldn't see, you know, being a big issue, but there would be, you wouldn't want to alter the, the existing surface. You wouldn't want to.
Is this the, if I'm not mistaken, that area is, is where it's real low, and it's, uh, stays like a puddle of water for.
Right next to it is, where all that bread and part of that.
Where East Regis and, and Bayvon's Office, all that area, all that, if I remember right, this is, this is all stays underwater right now.
Right, for several days.
Would it make sense for a rain garden?
Well, that's what I was just wondering, if something in there would help.
Something unique or different.
Would help for the drainage there.
Well, usually, I think the rain garden, it's, you're storing it and you're discharging it. And in this case, I don't think there's any stormwater management in the area. So if you discharge, you have to have maintenance across all the properties in which to convey the water.
Yeah, our rain garden actually swerves the, looks theoretically, and then builds a level of discharge to the creek. This actually is a storage area, and the water goes away either through absorption or evaporation. There's no, there's no piping or anything in there.
Well, let's see what happens on Friday. Mr. Hager.
Can I make one recommendation in this?
Yeah.
I know that you're a lawyer too, Miller, not well, but Joe, I know enough to know that you're, uh, I was going to put it there. What I recommend the town do, offer him, have, have the appraisal done, six hundred thousand dollars, then ask him to gift that to the town, and he take the appraisal right off his taxes. And he knows how to do that. Gift that, he'll sit there for the rest of his life, and they'll just be in the ice world. But I think if he just gifts it to the town, there's no money involved with town. Somebody might have to pay a couple thousand dollars to, to do an appraisal. They didn't prepay the hundred thousand. And then put the staircase in like a pump out, and they just ungravel to the thing. But you, you just ungravel to it, don't even ask anybody, do it, just ungravel. And.
You can't ungravel. You can't put bill, put, you gotta put form in it.
Oh, really?
Against the law. It can only be done sometimes.
Was that, can you, foundation, you're not gonna do that.
Because there's, there's stormwater, we don't get that here.
Well, I would say, let's see what you guys come up with, and maybe you'll suggest that to him, what Mr. Hager had mentioned, and, uh, then, uh, then we, it becomes ours, and we figure out a way that we can make it, uh, drain it out of the way in some, somewhat. It's, it's, it looks terrible back there when there's a, a pond of water back there. Well, very good. That's all the two items on the agenda. I did have a question. Hey, Steve, a question I had, I was looking at the, uh, of course, now we're, we're into August. When do you think that we'll have fiscal?
The final fiscal sixteen?
Yes.
The audits are coming in October.
In October.
Some bucks are still in effect right now, doing the controls and deferrals, so they'll be issuing a statement, uh, to look at in December.
Do you feel pretty comfortable this year, to think that we'll be?
Well, because of FY15, we were late for me that off, and took the head for the unbilled business, the first one, they will be counted as, uh, current.
Yes.
In FY16, in addition to FY16, so we'll be experiencing a favorable debt variance for both revenue and expenditure in FY16. So we would be looking at a, at maybe somewhat healthier unassigned fund balance at FY, at June 30, 16, and June 6, 15. Do each of those two years use about, roughly same amount of fund balance, and balance applied to just best, or the fact, what factors into that number also.
Do, do we feel that we might have it by December this year?
Well, we'd be up to it, but states are healthy, we, you know, we'll have it coming in, in the beginning of, of, of October, for two weeks of yield.
That would be great. I'd love to get us back going back on track. I think you all feel that.
I will love you more than you.
Yeah. Does anyone else have anything that we want to talk about in regards to, bring it up on the workshop here? Mr. Lemon?
Can you tell us where we are on smart meters?
It, uh, well, uh, we have had a couple different meetings, and we got one scheduled for next Tuesday or Thursday with Brian and Census. And I'm, I'm involved in a meeting sometime next week with, uh.
LV, is it?
LV Water.
Oh, it's on.
Census, there's like three or four of them that, that I've got some ongoing meetings with. One of the things that we're looking at is networking, the networking of this, and how much coverage can be done. But it's, uh, it's turned into a, there's a lot of information we have to digest with this, but we are moving with it. We're continually with our water audits that we're doing. I think, uh, we're, we're always looking at ways to try to improve finding where our water, water, be more efficient, I guess is the best thing to do. But yes, I can tell you, it's not dying with me.
Well, you're, I assume you're meeting with vendors, and then you'll get quotes, is that what's going on?
Once we, uh, I think, once we get the vendors and to make sure all the, uh, the tops of the meters can just be the only thing to be replaced, but can they be replaced on our older meters is a question. And if we get away from LV Water, will this other, I'm trying to think the group's name.
Mueller? I think Mueller.
Mueller, Mueller.
Mueller.
Mueller. Will Mueller system work on what we. Will Mueller system work on what we currently got? And these are the things that they're finding out. But you're right on target. I mean, once we determine what vendor we want to go with, then, then they'll make a presentation in front of the board and come up with a cost. There has been a couple quotes as it came through.
Lou?
Yes, we, in fact, did we have one or two?
We got a million plus, one was Mueller.
Yeah, so we, we've gotten one with, with all the information on it. That's a networking system. There's a cost that goes on each and every year, but we also want, they received the one from LB Water, which we haven't received yet. But we are moving it.
All right, we're having a meeting with Preservation Maryland and Cordish Company on the thirtieth of August at ten thirty to discuss the Holly Hall.
Really? Everyone's asking that to speak.
It just seems like it's, yeah, or it's just...
The fixer, the six of the fix program, they died outside contact, they're detective, I forget his name, but I'm dealing with this market there, Arc Angeles. And we just got, said that, that meeting for a day. That's John Peters, the cordish guy.
Anything else? This meeting is adjourned.
All right. Thank you, Brian.
Plain meeting, yes. The annexation, they recommended approval of the annexation. They, there was one, they voted three to two on, oh, it was the hospital, which was a little surprising to me.